Welcome to Arlington Special Town Meeting, November 18th. It's 8:00 PM. We're going to get started, so I'm going to call the meeting to order. I have a few brief remarks tonight. Last Monday, we got through a total of one and a half articles. With 25 articles on the agenda or on the warrant, my calculations will be here for 18 nights if we keep up this blistering pace. This is a special town meeting. Usually they don't go that long. We get rid of our warrant under our regular town meeting, which averages about 70 to 80 articles in five, six, seven nights at the most. So I'm hoping we can do a little better tonight. I sent to all of you a primer on the motions, the parliamentary procedures, what those all are. Those are usually distributed with your packets. We didn't get it in there, but you have it now. I also gave everyone a portion of town meeting time, our rules and regulations that we go by on the points of order and points of personal privileges. During our debate the other night, we got pretty far off the mark what points of order and privilege are. So I thought I would give everybody an idea of what they actually are. The last thing, we have one resolution this year, Article 25. What as we've done in the past and as we're going to do this time, I give each side one seven-minute time to speak. So the proponents will get together and put together their presentation and have seven minutes. And they've already have put together a video, which is on the online agenda on our webpage. And that runs about six and a half minutes. If someone else wants to discuss anything with the proponents, get in touch with me and I'll put you in touch with them. Now, the opponents or the people who are, don't want to go forth with that resolution, I've been a touch, I've been contacted by a few people. If anyone else wishes to be on the opposition to that, please get in touch with me and I will put you together with the other folks who are, want to put together an opposition. So just email me for the pro or con on 25. But again, we're going to have one presentation by each side and then we're going to vote on it. Okay. And that is about it for my remarks. I just wanted to remind everybody, if you're having a voting issue and you're not able to use the voting portal or you're not able to use the raise hand feature in Zoom, you can call Julie Brazil and report your vote to her. And she will report it to us and we'll have, Mr. Karowski will manually enter it for you. And I'm going to repeat her number for everybody to write down, 781-316-3071. And we've made some adjustments to how we're going to handle anyone who is on tech support. While we get a vote, we're going to try and get your vote and have that recorded as well. Oh, Julie's telling me I wrote, oh, that's her number. Is chat still on for just the presenters? Yeah.
Sorry, John, I was just providing that because that's to all the attendees to see Julie's phone number that you just gave.
Oh, okay. So that, that chat is, just gave you her phone numbers. So if you are on tech support, we're going to get, try and get in touch with the tech support person so you can register your vote. We did that successfully between Chris and Patrick the other night. We're going to keep it up tonight. All right. So let's get going with our agenda. So any town meeting members left to be sworn in? If so, please use the request to speak button, which we have had renamed because I kept calling it request to speak and it used to be asked to speak, but now it's the right name. So if you haven't been sworn in, go ahead and use the request to speak button. Now, we'll give you half a second to get that up. I don't think there is anyone who has it. Navigate to your portal and give that a shot. So I'm not seeing any on my screen because I think everyone's sworn in. So I recognize Mr. Hurd.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. It is moved that if all the business of the meeting has set forth in the warrant for the special town meeting is not disposed of at this session, when the meeting adjourns, it adjourns to Monday, November 23rd, 2020 at 8:00 PM. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Hurd. Mr. Foskett, would you like to second that?
Second.
Okay. I'm going to direct the clerk to enter one vote in favor of that motion. Are there any announcements or resolutions? If anyone has an announcement or resolution, please use the race request to speak feature. Okay, I'm not seeing any. Okay. Does anyone have any reports that they have to receive? That they would like us to receive? Any committees have reports? I'm going to call for any reports of committees. So again, use your request to speak button if you have a report you want us to receive.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
A point of technical support. We're still in the attendance vote, so I don't know if anyone has the request to speak button up right now.
Oh, okay. So what I'm going to do is ask everybody to, and I'm not seeing any of that on my portal screen. I'm just seeing Article 5 from last, the other night. If you haven't used the attendance vote, please go in and check in the attendance vote. And check in attendance. That's our quorum call. This is usually our test question, so I'm going to ask for everybody to go ahead and do that now. And if you're having an issue, the raise hand feature should be up, Ms. Wayman. So Adam, can you see how many people have voted?
We have 223.
Okay.
Mr. Moderator, we do have two points of order.
Well, they're gonna, I think, I might have to log out of the portal and log back in.
Okay.
Because it's not functioning properly. I can't see any of those points of order. Who are they, miss, I may ask?
Sure. We have got John Warden, Paulette Schwartz, and Sherri Baron.
Okay. So I'll take Mr. Warden first. Mr. Warden, you can unmute yourself. Remember, everyone, name and precinct when you first unmute yourself and you don't have to ask if we can hear you.
Am I unmuted?
Yes, you are, sir.
Thank you. The question is, last Monday, I was able to go from the portal to the Zoom by hitting the Chrome button. It doesn't seem to be working tonight. So maybe you could tell everybody, maybe everybody else, the other 219 people know, but I don't. How do you move between the two, the two platforms?
We're going to have Pat Libby give you a call, John, and he's going to help walk you through that. That's beyond my capacity. So Patrick, can you get John a call? And any technical issues like Mr. Warden just had? So are, should be addressed through the Q and A at this point.
Hey, is that?
Well, Pat's going to help you, John.
Where's the Q and A? I don't see that.
Right down there at the bottom of the Zoom screen.
On the Zoom screen? Let's see. Maybe, I don't know where I'm on. Bottom of the Zoom screen.
So Patrick's giving you a call, John, so we're going to go to the next point of order, if you will.
Okay.
Thank you. Ms. Paulette Schwartz?
That was an erra.
Okay. There's an ability to lower your hand once you put it up. So Sherri Baron?
Hi, Sherri Baron, Precinct 7.
Yes, Ms. Baron.
I don't know if this is a point of order, but I wanted to clarify. You said about Article 25, that each side would give a seven-minute presentation. Will there be appropriate time for input from the town meeting members?
What we've done in the past is we have had each side give us their presentation and then we've gone to a vote.
And that is what you plan to do this time?
I'm going to follow the same pattern that I've done in the past, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Ms. Baron. I think this, hmm. My portal's not working right. I've got to totally log out and log back in. But in the meantime, if there anyone has reports, please give us a word right now. Otherwise, we're going to move on. Oh, we have to wait for this to finish. 234, do we know how many are on the, your Zoom, Ms. Wayman?
Yeah, we have 243 attendees with a small handful, maybe one, two, maybe five or six of them are not town, not town meeting members.
Okay, so we have about 43 of about three town meeting members who have not yet voted. I'm going to give you another minute to do your check-in. And then we're going to proceed. In the meantime, I'm going to try and log back in. I think that did it. So I have four missing votes, Joanne Preston, John Ellis, Elaine Crowder, and Adele Kraus. If you four folks want to check in. Adele has been gone for 18 minutes, but Joanne and John, please vote now. We're going to give you another 15 seconds and we're going to figure a check-in is done. Okay, so we're down to Joanne Preston. Joanne got herself a new high-speed internet router over the weekend, so she should be good to go. And she's voted. Okay. So let's close that voting.
Excuse me, Mr. Moderator?
Yeah.
Julie Brazil's raising her hand.
Hi, Mr. Moderator. Adele Kraus just called me. She is still trying to get help. So if someone can call her, she wasn't able to do anything.
All right, we'll all, we'll check her in. Mr. Kraus, you will add her in as a, here. And Patrick, could you call it Adele Kraus? Oh, you just got off the phone with John, so I should have given it to Chris.
Mr. Moderator, Mr. Warden needs to explain to us what his phone number is. That is not public knowledge.
Huh. I can give him your phone number. John Warden, if you're still out there, if you would call 781-316-3459. John, so call 781-316-3459. And that will bring you to Chris, Chris Thickett, right to his desk. I'll say it one more time, John, hopefully you're here, 781-316-3459. Let's hope John gives you a call. I don't have John's phone number unless John wants to pop back in and give us his phone number. Okay, so now, now Mr. Weinstein has a point of order. We haven't even started yet.
Yeah, hi.
Hi, Jordan.
Hi, Mr. Moderator. I just wanted to ask whether or not it would be possible to appeal either formally or to your sense of fairness. Your ruling that there would be no discussion beyond the seven minutes allowed for each article.
That's, no.
I proponent.
No.
It's a very important question.
Mr. Weinstein, Mr. Weinstein, that's first, that's not a point of order. There is no, the, all rules of the quorum and all rules of how the meeting votes are strictly the moderator's determination unless they're set out in the bylaws. And the moderator is in charge of the, the happening of the meeting, how it progresses. This is a rule that we have used in the past for at least three or four years, maybe more. And it's a rule that I'm going to stick with this year. And frankly, this is, it's an issue that I'm not going to get into right now, but I've made my decision. I've announced it. It's been out there in the public for weeks now. I'm just making sure that everyone understands, but thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so assuming there's no more reports or to be received, we're going to go right into Article 5. So, Mr. Karowski, if you want to bring Article 5 back up.
And, Mr. Moderator, I will be restoring the session from Article 5 and it should include the same speaking queue that we had up the other minute.
Correct. We'll just go right back to the same queue. I think the two points of order were dealt with, though. All right.
Would you like me to clear them out?
Yes, please. I believe we did deal with both of them. And when done with that, we're going to call Karen Kelleher.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Am I okay to proceed?
Yes.
Karen Kelleher, Precinct 5, thank you. I rise in favor of Article 5, the fossil fuel ban for new construction and substantial rehab. And I'd like to speak to it from the perspective of the affordable housing sector. I'm the executive director of an organization called Risk Boston. We provide financial policy and other kinds of support for affordable housing as well as economic development, small business, and other aspects of community development. In that capacity, my organization's been providing policy support at the intersection of affordable housing and energy efficiency and climate resiliency for up to 10 years, almost 10 years now. And in that, at that intersection, we are very focused on driving both, you know, reduction of fossil fuel use, but also controlling cost. Because when we're advocating for measures that reduce the carbon footprint of a building, if they are increasing the cost, they may be actually reducing the affordability of that project, reducing the numbers of units or reducing the income level or increasing the income levels. So we try very hard to make sure that we're not pulling between those two objectives, but doing things that are moving both of them forward. So I want to speak to this article and what I like about it from that perspective. My organization's been very supportive of this type of ban in Brookline and in other communities in Massachusetts because of some of the features of these bans that really make it a feasible, viable thing to push forward in both affordable housing and other multifamily housing. So there are two primary things I like about this ban. First is that it focuses on electric HVAC systems. And that's a place where the market offers electric options that are cost-effective. I couldn't say the same thing if this was requiring hot water heaters to not rely on fossil fuels or emergency backup generators because the market hasn't produced those options yet. But in the HVAC space, there are viable, cost-effective electric options. The second thing I like about this is that it has waiver authority if there were to be financial feasibility issues as a result of this imposition. And so there is a particular call-out for affordable housing in that waiver authority. So should folks be concerned that this is imposing a cost on affordable housing that it can't bear, that it's going to reduce its affordability? I think there's plenty of track record to show that that's not the case. And the last point I'll make is that that's being demonstrated right here in Arlington by the Housing Corporation of Arlington. I think it was pointed out on Monday night that they are currently constructing two different projects that are relying on all-electric HVAC systems in their affordable housing. Thank you very much, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Ms. Kelleher. Next would be Roderick Holland.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Roderick Holland, Precinct 7. Brief comment on this article. I like it a lot because it gives us something for the gut rehabs and teardowns that otherwise are causing havoc. At least we get better greenhouse gas emissions out of it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Gordon Jamison, Precinct 12. In preparation for speaking tonight, I looked at the video again. I think the article is positive. I'm positive on the article in general and well-crafted. I have a question about what Ms. Keller just said, and then I have a couple more. She mentioned that it only applied to HVAC and not hot water. Could that be clarified by someone?
Mr. Meeks?
Um, yes. So I think it does apply to, it applies to fossil fuel piping. And so fossil fuel and piping, of course, would affect a hot water heater, so it does apply. I think she was referring specifically to the exemption for hot water in large buildings, buildings over 10,000 square feet. And that's where the technology does not exist.
Thank you, Mr. Meeks. The history of this type of article goes to Brookline. And was that, Mr. Meeks, was that put through the moderator? Mr. Meeks, was that a bylaw that passed town meeting? How was that passed initially?
Mr. Meeks, excuse me, is that?
Or Mr. Heim, actually, Mr. Heim might be the better person.
I believe it was passed by a bylaw in Brookline, but Mr. Heim.
Mr. Chairman, I, this is Pat Hanlon, Precinct 5.
You can't just break in unless I call on you, sir.
He was, he was left on.
I know. But you, Mr. Hanlon, you can't just break in unless I call on you.
I did address to you.
That, Pat, you can't break in unless I call on you. I, I'm the moderator. Gordon asks a question. I call on Mr. Heim to answer his question.
Reclaiming my time.
This, Gordon, go ahead.
Mr. I, I, so, I, Mr. Heim, is this a bylaw that was passed by Brookline?
Mr. Heim?
Douglas Heim, Town Council. Good evening, members of town meeting. Yes, the bylaw was passed by Brookline Town Meeting. The bylaw that Brookline Town Meeting passed was later rejected by the municipal law unit of the Attorney General's Office. I'd be happy to elaborate on that if folks would like. I know that Mr. Meeks and Mr. Hanlon are also aware of those details, but I don't want to take up all your time, Mr. Jamison. So the answer to that is, yes, it was passed by town, a town by, a town meeting bylaw.
Thank you. So am I correct, Mr. Heim, that bylaws usually require two-thirds vote?
Mr. Heim?
No, Douglas Heim, Town Council. So zoning bylaws require two-thirds vote. An amendment to the general bylaws require a majority vote. Unless Mr. Lainey correct me on that score. I believe that a general bylaw only requires a majority vote.
This is not a zoning bylaw?
No, sir.
Why is it not, why is it not a zoning bylaw?
I'll defer to Mr. Heim on that.
So Douglas Heim, Town Council, there's a couple of ways this particular, we could have approached this, but this is largely not the exclusive to the province of zoning. We have a lot of other regulations that speak to certain facets of private property regulation, including buildings. I believe that this is proposed to be entered in, under Title 6 of the town bylaws, which does regulate certain aspects of buildings and makes reference to the state building code. So it does fit in there. I'd be happy to, I don't want to take, again, more of Mr. Jamison's time than necessary, but I'd be happy to talk more generally about the legal posture for any town meeting members who would like to know more and why and how we're planning to approach the issue of the Attorney General's Office's decision relative to Brookline's.
I think, I think, thank you, Mr. Heim. I think I understand the Attorney General's position. I did, I looked at the, the video and that's explained that. I just was confused that this, to my mind, is a zoning bylaw. But I guess in this context, it's not. Because if it was a zoning bylaw, then this would be a way to work around to get a majority position versus two-thirds. But I trust your, your knowledge, Mr. Heim. On other things, I was happy to see on page seven, for those of, who are following along on the paper copy we were sent, that there is a difference between, you need 75% of the existing space to be changed for residential and a slightly lower for commercial. It says added space. So in other words, a question perhaps for Mr. Meeks or Mr. Hanlon? If I added, if I doubled the size of my house, I wouldn't have to do this. Is that correct?
Mr. Hanlon? Now, now you can speak.
That is, that is correct.
Thank you much, Mr. Hanlon. Continuing on, thinking towards the future, when we're doing, all doing this, I'm sure many of the proponents are against pipelines for natural gas. I myself was against the Northern, Northern Pass, which would have brought, for aesthetic reasons of the White Mountains, that would have brought hydro power down from Canada. I am concerned long-term about our supply here. Mr., speaking quickly to Mr. Twenley's comments at the end of his speech, I'm curious, how much of this is already in progress? If the Director of Inspections is online, could he report how many splits have been installed or permitted in the last 12 to 24 months?
It's Mr. Byrne, present. Can we bring Michael up if he is?
Good afternoon, good evening. Michael Byrne, Precinct 13, Inspector, Inspector Services. Good, no, we've not kept track of how many of these have been done, but I know that there has not been a lot of them so far.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Byrne.
Thank you.
Just trying to get, just trying to get how, how, how far this was being adopted already on itself. So it sounds like we need to have a little nudge here. So I'm, I'm moving towards being in favor of this, learning about the bylaw, you know, bylaw and, and that. And I want to remind people very quickly that whether or not you need to have a split or something, the town has a way, and if you don't have solar on your house, the town has a way for your electricity usage to tomorrow essentially be 100% green. And that's the Arlington Community Electric thing. You can opt up to the 100%. So I want to put a pitch in for that. And so while I admit I was initially skeptical, I will be voting for this. Thank you very much, Ms. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Jamison. Mr. Joshua Lobel?
Hi there. Josh Lobel, Precinct 8. I also am in favor of this article for many reasons. One is, I think that we probably all can agree on the fact that climate change is real and that we have a limited opportunity to address or mitigate all those problems. So one question we heard in our precinct meeting was, why should Arlington take this up? It seems like a much bigger issue. And I would agree, it is a much bigger issue. And probably it would be ideal if we had federal and state leadership on this, but we don't. And so many towns and cities around the country are doing this. San Francisco just did the same thing with even a little bit more severe impact because they also don't allow gas for cooking. There are, I guess, about 39 or 40 places around the country that have done it. So I think that, and unlike kind of just a symbolic move on our, our part, it also represents real opportunity because we're preventing building structures and... structures and, and systems that will be obsolete and have to be changed. So that just kind of makes sense. It's been mentioned several times that Brookline did pass this or similar article at their non-virtual town meeting. And originally, I think it had a fair amount of skepticism, but it ended up passing by a vote of 207 to three with their conversation there. So I think that, again, at least at their town meeting, people felt fairly convinced by all the discussion. The other thing is that by doing this, we're not really trying to force an industry so much. The mark, the technology is there already. It's improving all the time. And by putting in the, the kind of the core infrastructure to utilize this kind of technology, we can take advantage of it. Whereas if we don't do this and you build your house with a system that's not compatible with a heat pump, then it does totally, it would have to be replaced in order for us to do what we have to do by 2050. So I, again, I'm, I'm very supportive of this. I'm glad that Arlington is taking a leadership on it. And I appreciate all the people who've put in the effort to get this on our agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lobel. Mr. John Deist.
Yeah, there you go. Okay.
John, you have to turn off Mary's speaker.
Oh, great. Sorry, sorry, John.
Much better. Thank you.
I'm also strongly in favor of this. This is the great impending disaster for the entire world. And we, our participation this way is a really good idea. So I'm strongly for this. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Christian Klein.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Christian Klein, Precinct 10. I'm a practicing architect in the Boston area. The mechanical engineers who designed the mechanical systems for the interior spaces we design switched about three years ago to go, all going to air source heat pumps specifically for this reason, that any new infrastructure that's installed today, especially in the commercial side, which is not necessarily applicable to, to the bylaw we have in front of us, but everything will be most likely in place 30 years from now. And so if we are looking to reduce our emissions by 2050, we have to do it today. We can't do it 30 years down the road. So I am very strongly in favor of this. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Klein. Mr. John Warden. Mr. Warden. Can unmute yourself? Go ahead and talk, John.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can, again.
Thank you. I couldn't find the unmute button.
I, I did it for you.
Oh, oh, good. That's why I couldn't find it. Thank you, Mr. Moderator, John Warden, Precinct 8. I also, like previous speakers, am strongly in favor of this. And I was particularly moved by Mr. Tulio's comments Monday night about the, the legacy we're leaving and, and what will your, what will you tell your children and grandchildren when they ask you what you did about climate change in that 2020? Well, in my case, it'd probably be great grandchildren. My children have been involved in trying to deal with climate change for a long time. But I, I, the, the legislative process, I mean, we're going to send this, hopefully we pass this by a large majority. We will send it to the legislature. And there it goes into kind of down the rabbit hole. And you can be sure that the, the gas industry, the oil companies and the, and the sorry, and the developers will have the best, the best lobbyist money can buy. And if you've ever dealt with the legislature, you know that lobbyists have a much better way of getting the ear of our legislators than we ordinary citizens do. But it is important for us at this point, I believe, to, and I'll bring this all together, to do whatever we can on the local level to show that we are really serious about this climate change issue, which is so really an existential challenge to our society. And just mentioned briefly three things that we can do ourselves without any help from the legislature. One is stop the war on trees. The, the central administration of our town on
John, let's, we're talking about fossil fuel right now. Let's keep it within scope.
Well, I tie this together, Mr. Moderator.
Okay.
Because the, the, the whole concept is say, is eliminating the additional use of fossil fuel. And part of that, if we stop cutting down all those trees, they wouldn't use those gas chainsaws to, to cut them down. And so, but, but Mr. Meeks, in, in earlier presentation that I heard, talked about the importance of trees. That's also a part of climate control, which is really what we're dealing with. I mean, climate change. And the trees are putting out oxygen and stuff that, that, that helps us avert that. And so removing them is a nimical, it's, it's part of the same, it's part of the same thing is eliminating fossil fuel. Getting, saving our tree canopy. The second is the terrorsian epidemic, which again is, those aren't, those aren't electric backhoes that are destroying those little affordable houses and, and carrying them off to the dump. And all the materials and so on, good wood that you can't even buy anymore is being destroyed to put up new buildings made of, of, made of the same thing that makes fossil fuel, oil. And, and finally, and this, this is a very important point. The biggest and most expensive project ever undertaken in 385 years in this town has been the new high school. And one of the, one of the undertakings that was given to us at town meeting, it was given to the voters, the new high school would be heated and cooled by geothermal. So it would not use fossil fuel except for cooking. And, and then, but aft, after the, those votes were obtained and the thing was approved, they said, well, we're gonna not, can't do the geothermal. And, and I think that is a serious mistake that has to be reversed.
And that's a little bit out of scope there, John. Let's bring it back to the article.
I'm trying to get rid of the fossil fuel going into the high school.
I know, but that, but we're not going to solve the problems of the high school architecture issues tonight. We're talking about fossil fuel thing.
I, the reason I bring that up, Mr. Moderator, please, is that when we go to the legislature, we, 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 we want to say we have done everything we can on the local level to, to combat client change, climate change in, in our town and to be an example for the rest of the state. And if they say, well, what about the high school that you, that you use good old natural gas with, with our leaky pipes? You didn't change that, did you? Well, you look a little bit hypocritical. I don't want them to be able to say that about us. That's not the kind of people we are. Let's do it right. Let's pass this, pass this, this, this warrant article, send it to the legislature, and let's go in there with a clean slate and say we've done everything we can. Trees, teardowns, high school to, to our level to do our part for climate, to prevent climate, mitigate climate change. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, sir. Sophie Magliazzo.
Yes, good evening, Sophie Magliazzo, Precinct 8. I am clearly in the minority here, but I rise in opposition to Article 5. Although I'm all in favor of clean heat, unless we're all moving to clean heat, I find it fundamentally unfair that an owner of a new home will pay the same property taxes we all pay, but be prevented from choosing how to heat our home, same as we have that choice. If we want to make a move to clean heat, it needs to be done, I believe, more at the state level so that it applies across the entire state to make a difference. And if we ignore the unfairness that I find, my additional concern with this article is the waiver provision. I believe it's going to swallow the article in what we're looking to do. So I think that basically with this waiver position, provision, the clean heat desire is just going to be wishful thinking. So I would be in favor of an article for clean heat like this if it were more limited to commercial and non-owner occupied housing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Magliazzo. Libahia.
Libahia, Precinct 11, I move the question in all matters forward.
Okay, very, thank you very much, Ms. Heim. We have a motion to terminate debate. That's not debatable, so let's get a voting screen up to terminate debate.
Second, Mr. Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Fosker. So town meeting members, we have a motion to terminate debate on Article 5. And a second voting will be enabled. At that point in time, you will navigate over to your voting portal. You should hit refresh page or refresh screen. And that should bring up your voting, eight, one for yes, two for no, and three for abstain. And then hit cast your vote. Now remember, we only count yes and no votes. Ms. Wayman has raised the raised hand function on Zoom if you're having a voting issue. And if all else fails, please call Town Clerk Brazil at 781-316-3071. And it looks like we don't have anybody in tech support right now, so we're not going to run into any issues right there. So go ahead and cast your vote. So we seem to be picking up the speed of voting. Everyone's kind of fallen into a good pattern. Maybe it's not going to take two minutes each time. Because right now, we've already had 221 people voting and only 25 outstanding. And Ms. Kraus may still be experiencing issues.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
Julie Brazil has her hand raised.
Okay. We can assume when Julie raises her hand during voting, that you can just bring her up and activate her?
Sure.
Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, Adele Kraus, Precinct 6, votes yes.
To terminate debate. Very good.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, we have 10 missing voters. And I'm told Mr. McCabe has logged off. So he's not in queue anymore. So we have eight voters. Let's give them 15 seconds. Michael Brown, Patricia Costa, Annie La Court, Karen Kelleher, Robert Marlin, Sylvia Dominguez, Leonard Carden. Out of those six people can go ahead and vote. We're going to give you 10 seconds. I'm going to start my stopwatch. Because I don't have my nifty little clock. And five, three, two, one. Okay, let's close voting. Motion to terminate debate, it's two thirds. It passes 88%. We have 212 in the affirmative, 29 in the negative, debate is terminated. That brings us to the vote on the main article. So once we run through the screens, I'm going to also assume that everybody has figured out where their name is and that they can find their name on their screen the first pass. If that's not the case, let me know. Okay, we're now going to take a vote on the main article, on Article 5, Home Rule Legislation, Fossil Fuel Infrastructure. If you want to pass the bylaw and send it off to the legislature as a home rule, please vote yes. Once Mr. Karowski has finished his clicking. There we go. So your voting portal should be open at this point. Navigate back to the portal. Hit refresh if you need to. Vote one for yes, two for no, three to abstain, and then cast your vote. If you're having an issue, the raised hands feature will be opened. And Mr. Karowski, I'm going to enter, verbally entered votes for Ms. Marie Capelka. Ms. Capelka votes no. And Mr. John Leonard. Mr. Leonard is voting yes.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
We've got two hands raised.
Okay.
Adele Kraus and Janice Weber.
Okay, let's take Adele.
Yes.
Ms. Kraus votes yes. Okay. So Adam, can we enter a verbal vote for Ms. Kraus? And Ms. Weber?
Mr. Moderator, could you please say the votes at the end of each article? If it's not too much trouble?
Oh, yeah, declare what the vote is?
Yes, please.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
That wasn't a voting issue, but I will do that. Beth Ann Friedman has her hand up.
There's a problem with my voting screen. I vote yes, but it's just thinking, thinking, thinking. So I, I think I have to reboot.
Okay. Yeah, with your permission, we'll enter, enter your vote as a yes vote.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Does Mr. Lobel have a point of order? And then Mr. Weinstein after Mr. Lobel.
Hi, this is Josh Lobel, Precinct 8. Just very briefly, I know that many people have to resort to the verbal vote, but I think it gives them undue influence in a way when you announce it, when the rest of our votes are not displayed. So I don't know if there's a way around that, but just something to consider. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Okay, so I'll, I'll try and wait to the very end of the vote before I do it and then announce the two that I have. The others, I'm not sure what else we can do. We'll try that. Thank you. And Mr. Weinstein has his hand up.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Moderator, Jordan Weinstein, Precinct 21. I'm just reporting on behalf of Sylvia Dominguez, a town meeting member, that she's not been able to vote using the portal. And doesn't seem to be able to raise her own hand.
If Ms. Dominguez would call the tech support people, she can get their phone numbers on the get help button?
Yep.
Mr. Moderator, I just, I just spoke with Sylvia and she's awesome.
Okay, is she, is she able to vote?
Yes.
Okay. So we'll give Sylvia a moment to, to vote because she still hasn't voted. So we'll give Sylvia a moment to vote because she still hasn't voted yet. So Sylvia, if you can go ahead and vote. Then we're gonna Anne Fitzgerald, Michael Brown, Sylvia, and have not voted. So we'll wait, give those three folks a second.
Mr. Moderator, Julie Brazil has her hand raised.
Okay. Ms. Brazil?
Julie Brazil, Town Clerk. I do have a vote for Ms. Fitzgerald whenever you're ready.
We'll take her vote because I'm about to close voting.
All right. Anne Fitzgerald, Precinct 17, votes yes.
Very good. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, Phil has a point of order. Phil Goff.
Okay. Mr. Goff, what's your point of order? And Sylvia has now voted. So Mr. Goff, what's your point of order?
Phil Goff, Precinct 7. I'm just wondering, Mr. Moderator, for the sake of time, and I know this may not be the most popular suggestion, but for the sake of time, would it make sense for us to record the votes of those who are able to vote? And if the vote is close, we then take the time to go through and do all the verbal votes?
Well, we wouldn't.
Something passes by 90%, is it really worth all the time we're taking to make sure everyone, as important as it is to register?
If
Thank you.
We are gonna, we have to take everyone's vote before we close voting because once we close voting, we can't go back in and manipulate the database. And if they want to get their vote in. So I don't think it really takes that much time, but I understand your point. We'll see how it progresses with the meeting. So let's close voting at this point. The motion carries. By 93%, we have 225 in the affirmative, eight in the negative. And it's a vote, and I so declare it. That ends Article 5. That will bring us to Article 6. Well, very good. Thank you, sir. That's going to open up Article 6. Mr. Hurd, do you have anything to say about Article 6?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. John Hurd, Select Board Chair. Mr. Moderator, this is an article submitted by Jordan Weinstein and 10 registered voters as amended by the Select Board to create a study committee to evaluate the creation of a civilian police advisory board or other alternative civilian-based mechanism to address complaints about police interactions in Arlington. The Select Board urges town meeting to adopt this article as comprised in the Select Board report. The Select Board voted in favor of positive action, 5-0. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Very much. And we have two amendments. Is Ms. Kelleher, Krista Kelleher with us? Does she want to present her amendment? Ms. Kelleher?
Thank you. Mr. Moderator, Krista Kelleher, Precinct 5. I offer this amendment to ensure that the study committee is constituted in a way that both draws on the expertise of town employees serving in key leadership roles and maintains the integrity and effectiveness of the committee. First, I'd like to thank Select Board members for their thoughtful deliberation on the article, the improvements they proposed in terms of composition, charge, and timeline, and their overall support of the establishment of this study committee. It is essential to have the police chief or their designee and the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Director or designee serve on the study committee as the input of such leaders will be invaluable. Their participation is critical for a successful process to consider what, if any, type of civilian advisory or review board might best serve all of the residents of Arlington. Their expertise and insights will allow for a more informed discussion because these individuals have unique vantage points. So why should they assume non-voting status on the study committee if they are so vital to its effectiveness? Three reasons. One, affording them ex officio non-voting status allows them to freely offer perspectives and ideas without placing them in a position where they might perceive or experience pressure in regard to decision-making. It offers them a level of protection so that they are not placed in a vulnerable position should they feel uncertain or conflicted about any issues or recommendations. It also allows them to offer their expertise without any questions or concerns about their autonomy or allegiances. Second reason, it could provide other members of the study committee a sense of comfort and perhaps even assurance that they can participate, raise questions, and weigh in on recommendations and decisions in a free and open manner. It may, as a result, allow them to deliberate and vote without a concern about how their stance might be in alignment with or different from that of these town leaders. Finally, third reason I'm offering, it increases the likelihood that the study committee's process, activities, and recommendations will be accepted by the community at large without raising questions or citing concerns about how recommendations were made and by whom or under what conditions. So I kindly ask my fellow town meeting members tonight to act favorably on this amendment by adopting it. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Foscat?
Second.
Thank you, sir. The second amendment we have is Ms. Elizabeth Dre. Let's bring Ms. Dre forward. Ms. Dre?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Elizabeth Dre, Precinct 8. Mr. Moderator, before I present my amendment, with your permission, I'd like to make a request to strike two words from this amendment. I don't know if this is possible.
Yes, it hasn't been submitted yet and seconded, so it's still.
Ah, fantastic. Would you like me to explain the words I would like stricken or how should I?
Yes, let's get rid of the words you don't want so we know what you're talking about.
Okay, so the, it says following the words. I'm sorry, the last paragraph of what is on the screen currently, it asks for a representative with prosecutorial or legal defense experience. I'd like to strike the words prosecutorial or, please.
Okay, so you wanted to read, and to include at least one representative with legal defense experience?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. With legal offense. Okay, so leaving the word with and getting rid of. All right, so town meeting members, please go to Ms. Dre's amendment and strike out those words in her last paragraph with prosecutorial or. So it would read one representative with legal defense, et cetera. Go ahead, Ms. Dre.
Thank you. I present this amendment to my fellow town meeting members for their consideration and support. This amendment makes three small changes to what the Select Board has proposed. Number one, my amendment moves the appointment of the Citizens Police Academy graduate to the purview of the town's Diversity, Equity, Inclusion, or DEI Director or their designee. And my rationale is as follows. The DEI Director is responsible for coordinating and supporting the work of the Human Rights Commission, the LGBTQIA+ Rainbow Commission, and the Disability Commission. She is also a core racial equity team member. And in her role, she promotes healthier communities, advances racial equity, and fosters community engagement. These roles and her expertise make her uniquely positioned to understand the needs and concerns of residents who, as a group in general, tend to have more frequent interaction with the police department. The DEI Director can use her expertise and the lens of diversity, equity, and inclusion to best select a Citizens Police Academy graduate who will be most effective in this study group. Due to the different natures of their jobs, I believe that this is a different lens than the police chief would use in choosing the representative. This matters because it is imperative that if the study group ultimately recommends a police civilian review board to town meeting, it will need to be structured in such a way that the most marginalized groups in our community, the groups who are most likely to interact with the police department, trust it and use it. A graduate of the Citizen Police Academy who has both an understanding of the need for this trust as well as an understanding of the Arlington Police Department will be crucial in building such a board and achieving this goal. My second change to the amendment is requires that this study group include and include at least one individual with legal defense experience regarding police arrests or detainment, especially with regard to disadvantaged populations. This language was added as feedback from several town meeting members who suggested that for efficacy and effectiveness, I'm sorry, efficiency and effectiveness, at least one representative should have practical and professional legal knowledge and experience in the area that this committee will be charged with studying. And my final change to this amendment replaces shall be encouraged to designate representatives who reflect racial, ethnic, and other forms of diversity to be found in Arlington to shall designate representatives. While I realize that there is no likely enforceable effect between shall and shall be encouraged to, I think that it is important to the long-term success of this study group to return to the stronger language found in the original article as proposed by Mr. Weinstein in March. I understand that this may make it a little more difficult, and there will need to be more communication between the appointing authorities to achieve this goal. However, I believe this increased effort will ultimately be worth it. And should a civilian review board ultimately be recommended, it will increase the likelihood that those who need it the most will trust it and use it because it was created by such a diverse and independent group of residents. Thank you, town meeting members. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Ms. Dre. Timor Yontar.
Second.
Second. Thank you very much, Mr. Foscat.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Timor Yontar, Precinct 7. Tonight with dinner, I had a fortune cookie which offered these words of wisdom for town meeting. Get to the point and keep it clear and simple. So this is a vote about a study committee. And in all my years, I have never heard nor seen nor smelled an issue that was so dangerous it couldn't be talked about. So yes, I'm for studying anything. I will vote yes on this article. And I also find the two amendments to be reasonable. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Yontar. Mr. Trembley?
Ed Trembley.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Ed Trembley, Precinct 19. I'm just curious where the, I've heard that the police chief has some sort of a review board in the works. And I'm just curious how, where in the process that is and what it's made of.
Chief Flaherty with us?
Yes, I am.
Can you enlighten Mr. Trembley, ma'am?
Thank you very much, Mr. Moderator and Mr. Trembley. Julie Flaherty, Chief of Police. So I'd like to start off by saying that for the record, that I am not opposed to civilian oversight. I fully support Governor Baker's police reform bill. Police chiefs for years and years have been advocating that the Commonwealth needs police certification. And the governor's bill calls for a post-system, a police officer standard and training system, including civilian oversight. And that would be a committee that would review all complaints received against all police officers, including Arlington officers. So I understand and I I understand the perception and I understand the community's desire for reform. But I, I think Article 6 is the wrong approach for Arlington. I support police reform, and I also support the profession of policing. Our police department has been one of the most progressive and transparent police departments, not only in Massachusetts, but in the country. Our programs and methods have been copied across the nation from our jail diversion program, which I'm very proud to to announce that our program just celebrated the 10th anniversary this past month of success to our approach with the opioid epidemic, which has been recognized nationally. We're a model police department and nationwide police departments come to us to learn about our behavioral health programs. So I would, so I would say that we should look at trends and we should look at data. The Arlington Police Department has not had an excessive force complaint in over 10 years. So that means that nobody has complained about a police officer in Arlington using excessive force for 10 years. We've had thousands and thousands of interactions with community members. We've received very few citizen complaints, and we have a system in place for receiving complaints and for investigating them as well. We are an accredited police department. We're accredited by the Massachusetts Police Accreditation Commission. This past month, we just went through our assessment and heard accreditation. We've been accredited since 2008. And what that means is that it's a voluntary, very time-consuming process that ensures our policies and our procedures are in line with 21st century policing standards. And not only that we have these policies and procedures on paper that we're in full compliance with them. And I'd just like to say, are we perfect? Absolutely not. We're not perfect. But if you look at the data, it suggests that we don't have a problem with excessive use of force. And we don't have a problem with complaints from community members. So I'm a new chief, but I've worked in this community for 25 years. 19 of those years, I've worked under the leadership of Chief Ryan, retired Chief Ryan. And under his leadership, we have worked tirelessly to build trust, to build strong relationships with community members, to build strong partnerships. And we did that through engagement by working with the community to problem solve. I'm forming, to Mr. Trembley's point, I'm forming a chief's advisory committee that will provide a forum for police and community interaction and discussion. I recognize the value of feedback from our community members, and I want to further strengthen those partnerships that we've worked so hard to form. So I think in closing, I just want to say that we have a very good police department. And I'm very proud to have spent my career here and to have the opportunity to lead it. And I'm asking that I have a chance to lead it. We have work to do, and I recognize that, and the entire police department recognizes that. And we need the community to work with us. I'll say it again, we're very transparent. I have never refused an opportunity to meet with community members or an opportunity to listen, and I'll continue to do that. The Commonwealth is addressing police reform. We should let the issues with civil service, the issues with collective bargaining, and the issues with be worked out at the state level and not at our local level in Arlington. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Chief.
So I still didn't get the chief didn't say what her her review board would be made, who would be on it? What entails her review board?
Oh, Chief Flaherty, can you answer that specific question? Who would be on your review board?
Oh, absolutely. So our review board would consist of members of the Human Rights Commission, a member of LGBTQ+ Rainbow Commission, members of our Disability Commission, community stakeholders, including residents and business owners, students with an interest in in maintaining positive relationships with the police department, the town council, a member of the Select Board. And right now, I'm working on getting those invitation letters out, and I hope to have that up and running within the next few months.
Thank you very much, Chief Flaherty. Mr. Trembley, you have about a minute left.
So I guess I'm going to make a, I'll make a comment. It seems to me that the chief really is taking this pretty seriously. And the makeup of her, the review board that she's proposing sounds not that much different than than the the study committee here. So I think it's probably not a bad thing just to let, let her review, review board form and, and let's see how it works. And we can always come back, you know, next year or the year after and, and establish another advisory board if, if we think the chief's board is not working very well. establish another advisory board if, if we think the chief's board is not working very well. But I, I'd say we shouldn't inundate ourselves with too many, too many review boards. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Trembley. Jordan Weinstein.
Excuse me. Yes, thank you, Mr. Moderator. Jordan Weinstein, precinct twenty-one. Just to let you know who I am, I am the author of record of Article Six that we're talking about right now, that would set up a town meeting committee to study the efficacy, the possibility of whether or not Arlington could use a civilian review board and have a bit more civilian oversight of its police department. It goes without saying that, first of all, I wanted to thank the select board and all of the organizations who have endorsed Article Six and support it alongside the Chief of Police, Police, Police's Advisory Board. There's no reason why both can't coexist. And once again, I want to emphasize this is a study committee, but it has been endorsed unanimously by the select board. It has been endorsed by the Arlington Human Rights Commission and also by the Envision Arlington Diversity Task Group. I want to express my thanks to the select boards for spending so much time in helping actually make an initial stab at this much better than it was originally. It was a much smaller body. But that, thanks to the select board's work, it has been expanded. And I want to point out that most of the seats that would be participating in this study committee are also part and parcel of the chief's advisory board. I don't see any reason why this, a study committee like this would interfere in any way, shape, or form without the, with what the chief is doing. But the particular difference I want to point out between the chief's advisory commission, as I understand it, and what this study committee creates is first, this is a study. Second, it is studying whether there ought to be a body called a civilian review board that is independent of the police department to conduct independent, and therefore, what some might consider more trustworthy examinations and investigations of complaints about our police force. If the police force is doing so well, and I have no reason to, and no data to say it isn't, so I agree with Chief Flaherty, then there should be a welcome mat out for such, at least examination into, into this committee. It would be independent of the police department again. Excessive force, I want to point out, is not the only way to measure one's police force, but temperament and the way that the police interact with the citizens that they're, they're sworn to protect and defend is also important. I just want to say also that I do support both amendments as friendly amendments offered by Krista Kelleher and Elizabeth Dre, and think that both help improve what will be, I'm sure, a very valuable and rewarding and productive study committee. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. William Berkowitz.
Or total quality management or similar titles to improve an organization. This proposed independent study committee is not exactly that, but I think it is designed and offered in the same spirit, and that it should ultimately lead to a better police department. And that's because when members of this committee sit down to discuss and exchange ideas with each other and with the public, the chances are good that through that dialogue and interchange, we will end up with a stronger APD. So to me, I see this article as very much pro-police, supportive of police services, and of Chief Flaherty's remarks, which I appreciate. And there's no downside in this study committee, which meaning that the study committee cannot, of course, change police practices. It only recommend them. If you like them, we can accept them. If we don't, we won't. So there's really nothing to lose, but potentially quite a bit to gain. And for these reasons, I support this article and ask you to vote for its acceptance. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And that was William Berkowitz. We missed the very first part, Phil. That's why I announced that. Christopher Wilbur.
To Police Chief Flaherty that relates to this article, I believe it should be fairly self-explanatory. Dear Chief Flaherty, as a TMM from precinct three, I'd like to give you a heads up that I intend to ask you about Article Six, Police Civilian Study Group at the upcoming town meeting. Specifically, I will ask you whether you have polled your officers on their opinions and feelings about the study group idea as proposed in this article. My concern as a TMM is that the study group idea will be pushed by its proponents as something that, quote, "being only a study can cause no harm." But is this really true? Specifically, I'm wondering how the prospect of this study might affect APD morale, if it has not already done so, and whether you think morale and trust are issues that should factor into this, quote, "only a study" context. In theory, I suppose some officers might possibly support the proposal as an opportunity to share and explore ideas that could prove constructive in town police relations going forward. Other officers, I imagine, might see such a study as more likely to become a vehicle for agitators trying to sow division between town and people. That, to the degree that it presumes an adversarial relationship between the two sides, it might help instigate the very contentiousness it purports merely to study. If the latter is true, claims that it's only a study should perhaps be challenged. I feel that discussion of Article Six should take account of everyone's attitudes and fears. An input from rank and file officers, either directly or indirectly, should not be omitted or excluded. I sent this to Chief Flaherty. She responded very positively to it. And she said that she was looking into it, into, into polling her officers. So I would like to ask her now if she would care to comment on what she found and the moral, more morale issues I've raised. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Wilbur. Chief Flaherty, can you answer Mr. Wilbur's inquiry?
Mr. Wilbur, Julie Flaherty, Chief of Police. The unions understand the climate, and I believe right now they're focusing their energy on the state level. Unions across the Commonwealth are working with statewide coalitions to make sure reforms are put in place fairly. As far as the Warren article, there are many unknowns. And at this point, they haven't commented because they don't know what the recommendations would be. But I, I will say that, that the police department should have input and should have, should have a voting member on the a doctor or an attorney go for any type of review. They're reviewed by their peers. And it's only fair that others, doctors and attorneys would be reviewing them. The governor's proposal includes law enforcement professionals as well as civilians on the review panel. But I would say that whatever the outcome of this article, all the members of the Arlington Police Department will continue to practice fair and impartial policing and can you continue to discuss them, to conduct themselves professionally as we always have.
Thank you, chief. Anything further, Mr. Wilbur?
No, thank you very much, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Wilbur. Phil Goff.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Phil Goff, precinct seven. I move to terminate debate on both this article and the amendments before it. Thank you.
Very good, Mr. Goff. Thank you very much. We have a motion to terminate debate.
Second.
And that's been seconded. The motion to terminate debate on the article and the two amendments before us, we're going to take that vote at this time.
Excuse me, Mr. Moderator.
Yes, sir.
Is that all one vote or?
Yeah, one vote. Because it's on the article and the motions to term, and the two amendments to terminate debates. So it's one big vote. So it's motion to terminate debate.
Mr. Moderator, Gordon Jamison has a point of order.
What's your point of order, Mr. Jamison?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Gordon Jamison, precinct twelve. My reading of the, the vote and Ms. Keller's amendment, do not jive. I believe her amendment needs to be corrected so that it's seventeen and two and fifteen. Or the, the, the vote, the vote has seventeen and two and fifteen. And she has fifteen and two and thirteen.
I'll study that right now while we vote on the terminate debate.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. And if Mr. Heim can look at that as well. So town meeting members, we have we have a motion to terminate debate, so voting is enabled to terminate debate. So Ms. Wayman, please raise hands for voting issues. If you can't vote or do anything else, call Ms. Brazil, seven eight one, three one six, three zero seven one. Town meeting members, please go back to the voting portal, hit refresh page, and you should get your voting screen, one TS to terminate debate, two to note, continue the debate. And then hit, cast your vote after you've
Mr. Moderator, Roderick Holland.
Yeah.
And Miriam. A few people are raising their hands.
Okay, let's start with Roderick, then go to Miriam, then Laurie.
I have fixed my problem, but for the longest time, the terminate debate vote was not enabled.
Okay. Yep, that's the refresh page button, Roderick.
Yeah, I hit that fifteen times.
Oh, I guess sixteen was the magic number.
It sure was.
Thank you. Ms. King, Miriam King.
Yes, I have a readout that says error establishing database connection.
So hit the refresh page button.
I think.
At the very top.
I think I did that already.
Try that again, because I just had that same issue. Okay, well, how would you vote, Miriam, to terminate the debate?
I'm trying again. Oh, I've got it now. Okay.
Perfect. Thank you. Let's take who was left? Oh, Ms. Brazil has a vote, I believe.
Yes, Julie Brazil, town clerk. I have Diane Mahan, precinct fourteen's vote on this motion to terminate.
Yes, and how would Ms. Mahan vote?
Yes, to terminate.
Okay. We have six people who have not yet voted. Stephen Ford, Theodore Peluso, Carolyn Sullivan, Leah Broder, Peter Gast, and Laura Tracy. If those four, six people could vote, we'll give you another 10 seconds.
Mr. Moderator, Julie is raising her hand again.
Okay. Let's see what Julie has to say, then we're going to close voting afterwards.
Julie Brazil, town clerk. Adele Kraus, precinct six, votes yes to terminate debate.
We also have Leah Broder as well.
Okay. Let's see what Leah has to say.
I have voted. My screen shows it's been recorded. I'm not sure if there's a problem.
No, I'm showing you have voted.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, it's probably just a refresh issue on my page.
Okay.
Two crossed in the ether world. All right, let's see. That should terminate. Let's close voting. And seventy-six percent, it is a positive vote to terminate debate. We have one hundred and eighty-two in the affirmative, fifty-eight in the negative. At seventy-six percent, it's a two-thirds vote to terminate, so the debate is terminated. To Mr. Jamison's point of order, I see what you're mean, Mr. Jamison. Mr. Heim, do you see the issue that Mr. Jamison pointed out?
Mr. Moderator, Doug Heim, town council.
Yes.
If I may, just for the sake of efficiency, try to correct the amendment. I think it's very clear what its intent is, and unless Ms. Keller has an objection, I think I can fix it relatively quickly before town meeting.
Okay, yes, if you would, then we'll just get Ms. Kelleher's thumbs up on that. So Julie, bring up Ms. Kelleher while Doug tells us how to fix this.
So, members of town meeting, Ms. Keller's motion, where it says under section one A, it should read fifteen members, four of whom shall be non-voting ex officio members. If you refer to the, it's actually probably a little bit easier to refer to the main motion. If you look at the main motion, essentially what we're doing is moving two items from voting members up into the non-voting members category. The Chief of Police, that's on page eleven of the Select Board Report, and the Diversity Equity Inclusion Director or the Designee. So all we're doing in this, in this motion, to my understanding, is moving them up from section one A, Roman numeral two, to section one A, Roman numeral one, and changing out the word fifteen shall be voting members to thirteen shall be voting members, and changing the word and number two of whom shall be non-voting members to four of whom shall be non-voting members. So again, Ms. Keller's motion, to my understanding, is simply taking the Chief of Police and the Director of Equity and Inclusion out of the list of voting members and moving them into ex officio members. The number of committee members in total shouldn't change, but the number of ex officio members, members should change from two to four, and the voting members changes from fifteen to thirteen, unless Ms. Keller has a correction to, to my understanding of her motion.
Okay. Ms. Kelleher, did you hear Mr. Heim's?
Yes, Krista Kelleher, precinct five. Thank you for the correction that you're making to the amendment. I accept it, and I appreciate it.
Okay, very good. And Mr. Foskett will second that?
Second.
Okay. So we're just moving some people around. Okay, so if town meeting members, first, we're going to vote on Ms. Kelleher's amendment. Then we're going to vote on Ms. Dre's amendment. And then depending upon how those two votes go, we'll vote on the main motion of the select board. motion of the Select Board, either as they wrote or as amended. So first, we're going to take a vote on Ms. Keller's amendment, changing people around from voting to non-voting, and changing the police of chief, chief police to the Diversity Equity Inclusion Coordinator. So let's open voting.
I'm sorry, John, this is Doug Heim, Town Council. I apologize for, may I have you recognized, sir?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'm sorry, just maybe I misheard you, but just to be clear, this amendment is changing the Chief of Police and the Director of Equity and Inclusion, Diversity Equity Inclusion, from voting members to non-voting.
Correct.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah. Okay, all in favor of Ms. Keller, is it voting is open for Ms. Keller's amendment? If you want Ms. Keller's amendment to the main motion, please vote one for yes. If you don't want it, vote two for no, and then on your voting page, click one for yes, two for no, and then cast your vote. If you're having an issue voting, please raise your hand, or if all else fails, call Ms. Brazil. Ms. Brazil has a vote, I believe.
Julie Brazil, Town Clerk, yes, I have the vote for Adele Kraus, Precinct six.
How does Ms. Kraus vote?
She votes yes on this amendment.
Thank you very much. We have ten members who have not voted. Lisa Reynolds, Stephen, Stephanie Ford, Weems, Patricia Costa, Jane Howard, Ted Peluso, Claire Johnson, and James DeTulio. If those members would please take a moment and vote. All right, I'm going to give them another fifteen seconds to vote. There's three down members who have not voted yet. Okay. I don't see any members in tech support. I see everybody up. Okay, let's close voting on Ms. Keller's amendment. Ms. Keller's amendment passes by sixty-eight percent in total. We have a vote of one hundred and sixty-two in the affirmative and seventy-seventy in negative. That amendment passes. I'm going to run through the screens, then we'll vote on Ms. Dre's amendment. So if you'll refresh, Ms. Dre is changing the composition of the task, of the study committee. Very good. Let's go. Article six, Dre. There you go. Okay, town meeting members, please navigate to your portal page, refresh your page. Vote one for yes, two for no, and then click cast your vote, and Ms. Wayman will open the raise hand feature in Zoom for if you have a voting issue. And Mr. DeTulio has his hand raised.
James DeTulio, Precinct twelve, Mr. Moderator, would it be possible to have? Yep, that was going to be my question, just to have the amendment up while we're voting.
Right, he had to go through the the screen or two to get there, but we are going to try and do that and show you the amendments and the motions while the voting goes on.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Moderator, Julie Brazil has her hand raised.
Okay, let's have what Julie has to say. How does Ms. Kraus vote?
Julie Brazil, Town Clerk, yes, Adele Kraus, Precinct six, votes yes on this amendment.
Okay. Getting faster at that, Mr. Korowski. Okay, we have sixteen members who have not yet voted. If you'll please take a moment and vote at this time. John Dyst, Nada Elwahi. Nuwahi, Nuwai. Oh, gosh, sorry, Nada. Nada Elwahi. Stephanie Ford Weems, Patricia Costa, Heather Cook, Susan McCabe, Michael Stern, Naomi Greenfield, and Ted Peluso. If you guys would please take a second and vote.
Excuse me, Mr. Moderator. Susan McCabe has her hand raised.
Okay.
Hi there, Susan McCabe from Precinct nine. I I just have a spinning wheel on my voting page and a blank in the field where it says your vote has been recorded, so it's not accepting my vote.
Okay, so why don't you give us to us right now?
Okay, it's a yes.
Yes, so Susan McCabe, Precinct nine, will vote yes, Mr. Korowski. And Susan, you may want to just refresh up at the top in the Windows address bar.
Sure, I've been doing that. I may have to reboot or something. Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Okay, so the last three people who have not yet voted can please vote, Nada, Stephanie, and Ted. We're going to give you ten seconds to do that. As soon as Adam's done with his vote, oh, he's done, okay. Five seconds left. And, okay, let's close voting on Ms. Dre's amendment. Ms. Dre passes by sixty-two percent, one hundred and forty-eight in the affirmative, ninety in the negative. Okay, as soon as we're done with that, we're going to take a vote on the main motion has printed in the Select Board's report, as amended by Ms. Keller's amendment and Ms. Dre's amendment. So now I'm going to take a vote on the main article as amended by those two amendments, both of which were successful. So your voting portal is now open. And town meeting members, please go to the voting portal, hit page refresh, and then you will be on the main motion as amended on Article six, is printed in the Select Board's report, one for yes, two for no, and then hit cast your vote. If you're having a voting issue, please use the raise hand feature in Zoom, which Ms. Wayman has opened for us. We have Ms. Dre has raised her hand.
Yes, I'm sorry, Mr. Moderator, Elizabeth Dre, Precinct eight, I got kicked out. I would like to record a vote of yes, please.
Okay, Ms. Dre.
Thank you.
Ms. Preston? Ms. Preston?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, I can.
I got kicked out also, and I'd like to vote yes.
Okay, so you're Joanne Preston, Precinct eight, is recording, nine, recording a yes vote.
Thank you.
Thank you. If you got kicked out, just hit the page refresh. It will bring you back. It's just a function of everybody going to the portal and hitting refresh at the same time. It causes a, kicks you out. It's a database issue. Just hit page refresh, and you should get your screen back. Just participate if you have to and get to the voting screen. All right, Susan McCabe?
Hi, I'm all set. I did what you said. I got booted out, but I managed to refresh again. I'm all set.
Thank you. Mr. Tosti?
Yes, I got kicked out also, out of the portal entirely. I'd like to record my vote as no.
No, okay.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
Julie Brazil, sorry, one moment.
Well, Ms. Brazil does whatever she's doing. Let's get Susan Stamps.
Um, yes, Mr. Moderator, I'm having the same problem. I got kicked out, and there was no way to refresh my screen.
Okay.
I'll vote yes.
Okay, we'll record your vote, Ms. Stamps. Try just reloading it totally. And finally, Mr. Bill Berkowitz?
Mr. Moderator, Julie Brazil, Town Clerk.
Yes.
I have a vote for Adele Kraus, Precinct six.
And how does Ms. Kraus vote?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. Okay, we have fifteen members who have not yet voted. If you could, please take your moment, go ahead and vote, and at this time, we're going to enter the votes for Mr. Leonard. Mr. Leonard votes yes. And Ms. Kripelka votes no.
Mr. Moderator, I think William Berkowitz is, has a question.
Yes, Mr. Berkowitz?
Just want to make sure my vote was recorded.
Hold on. I'm showing you have not voted yet, Mr. Berkowitz.
Could I, I can't get into the portal right now. Could I be verbally recorded to say yes, please?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir. We'll enter you as a yes vote, William Berkowitz. There you go. All right, for the last seven town meeting members, you have Peter Young, Paul Marshall, Brian McMurray, Alan Reedy, Asia Katka, and Ted Peluso have not voted yet. A few people will please take a moment to vote at this time. And we're going to give you fifteen seconds to do that. Five seconds. And time's up. Okay, let's close voting, Mr. Korowski. The motion as amended passes margin eighty-five percent. We have two hundred and five in the affirmative, thirty-six in the negative. It's a vote, and I so declare it. And that ends Article six, brings us to Article seven. We have a bylaw met. Article seven is a bylaw amendment to the Envision Arlington to update their language. As soon as we finish with the screens, we'll go to the next article, and yet Article seven. Envision Arlington. Yes, it's nine forty-five. I'm sorry. I don't have the big clock telling me it's nine thirty, so I keep forgetting to do the break. Let's take a five-minute break to give our staff and all of you a few minutes to rest. When we come back, we're going to take up Article seven. Thank you, Ms. Sullivan, for reminding me. And so it's a five-minute break, folks. We'll see you in five minutes. Okay, town meeting members, we're about to restart. There's two things that I wanted to remind you of. One is, I should have done this at the beginning of the meeting, but I was reminded by the board, the Library Board of Trustees that Ms. Joyce Redosha has been on the committee on the Library Board of Trustee for forty years. So we're all going to give Joyce a high five there for forty years of service to the town of the Library Committee. And I also want to remind everyone that there's a memorial procession tomorrow at seven thirty PM or AM, Mr. Chapdeline, for.
Mr. Moderator, it's John Hurd.
Okay, it's AM?
Yep.
Okay, there's a, and that's right down Mass Ave, Mr. Hurd?
Ah, yes, I believe so. It's coming from Hanscom Air Force Base as they drive into West Roxbury.
Oh, okay, so tomorrow morning at seven thirty AM, there's a memorial procession for Chief Warrant Officer Second Class Marwak Gabor. If all of you who could get out to Mass Ave while they drive through town, it would really be appreciated by his family. Thank you, Mr. Hurd. Okay, so we have first on our list, Mr. Greg Christiana. Greg, you out there? Maybe he thought it was a fifteen-minute break. Well, the co-chair of the committee is. Oh, great.
Yep, it just connected. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Greg Christiana, Precinct fifteen. Scott Lever and I are the co-chairs of Envision Arlington, and we present Article seven tonight. This article proposes light editing of the language in the town bylaws related to Envision Arlington to bring the wording of the statements up to date. We propose replacing the word citizen with a more inclusive term resident and update two of the titles to include commonly used terms, environment and sustainability, and diversity, equity, and inclusion. This article also updates the name of Vision twenty twenty to Envision Arlington in the town bylaws to reflect the change in name voted at the twenty eighteen town meeting. We propose changing the label used to describe the statements going forward. Statements of community values are more descriptive of their true function than using the word goals. The bylaw would continue to call on town officials to consider these statements when establishing policies. The term goal is now commonly used to describe something achievable with a specific period of time. And I hand it over to Scott, the other co-chair.
So Scott Lever?
Yes.
So we have to bring Scott forward.
Hello, Mr. Rock, Mr. Rock, Moderator, John, can you hear us?
Yeah.
Scott Lever, Precinct 8, co-chair of Envision Arlington. So our recommendation is that the statements formerly called goals remain relatively fixed. These are the result of years of public input and the use of train facilitators working with Arlington residents. The statements, as they are broadly stated, are intended to inspire future work. They've served us very well for 30 years. Intend to change those, we believe that they should only be changed with significant public input. To summarize, we're proposing minor editing to the, to the language. Greg has covered most, most of the elements. Just to repeat, we're intending to use term community members and residents and changing two titles to the more commonly used terms, environment and sustainability, and diversity, equity, and inclusion. And finally, and maybe most importantly, we're changing the name of what was formerly called Vision 2020 to Envision Arlington for probably obvious reasons. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Lever, Lever, sorry. John Ellis.
John Ellis, Precinct 3, I move to terminate debate.
Okay, we have motion to terminate debate in the article.
Oh, and just one, one more thing, Scott, did you want to mention the administrative change? Or shall I mention that?
Um, yeah, go ahead, Greg.
Okay. Yeah, so apologize for the late notice. We wanted to make an administrative change based on feedback that we got since Monday night, which would, this would change, let's see, under, let me just pull it up here, sorry. Under Article 1 of the town bylaws, the second sentence. We'd like to change that to strike and to our, to replace it with our, like, we value our active and compassionate, and then striking citizenry and replacing with community members. And then delivering services and striking in our community and replacing with two residents.
Hold on a second. And what was the last one, is that in that same Article 1?
That's an Article 1 of the town bylaws, correct.
So what is, what was the third one?
Striking the last three words in our community and replacing with two residents.
So what you're proposing is to make an administrative change to the second sentence, that it would now read, we value our active and compassionate community members, volunteers, and programs delivering services to residences.
I'm sorry, and continuing to, to strike volunteers and programs.
You want to strike volunteers and programs as well. So we value our active and compassionate community members delivering service to residences. Correct?
To residents, correct.
Residents. Did you get that, Ms. Brazil?
Yes, I did, thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, ma'am. Yeah, we can make that change. If Mr. Foskett will second it.
Second.
Okay, so we're going to make that administrative change. We have a motion, Mr. Heim has his hand raised, let's see what Doug has to say.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, I just want to clarify something, just so it's clear on the record. This is a voted town meeting that we're amending, it's basically a charter for Envision Arlington. It's not an amendment to the town bylaws.
Okay, this is Envision Arlington's charter, not the bylaws. Okay.
I'm sorry, I should clarify, there's, there's, there's one section of the bylaw that gets sort of updated, but some of the language here is an update to the, the charter vote. There's a smaller section that's under Article 15 of the town bylaws.
Okay, very good, I see that up top. Okay, we have a motion to terminate debate by Mr. Ellis, let's take his motion.
Second.
Thank you, Sir Foskett. So voting is now enabled, town meeting members, please navigate to the voting portal. Select 1 for yes to terminate debate, select 2 for no, and hit cast your vote. And Ms. Wayman has raised, used the raise hand feature on Zoom if you have a voting issue. And it looks like we don't have anybody in tech support right now. So we're good there. If you're having an issue voting, oh, Ms. Kate Leary has raised her hand.
Hi, yeah, it's not registering.
Your vote.
Yeah, yeah, it's like just a beach ball, you know?
Okay, so how would you vote, Ms.?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. If you have an issue, continue to get back to us. Tanuta Forbes has her hand up.
Yeah, I'm having the same thing, I think, I don't know if the system is overloaded, but I'm getting, this is my first problem that I've had, but I vote yes to terminate debate.
Okay, it's Tanuta Forbes, Precinct 10. We have, and Pamela Hallett, Precinct 21.
Mr. Moderator, Julie Brazil, Town Clerk.
Yes, ma'am.
I have a vote for Pam Hallett.
Okay.
She votes yes to terminate debate.
Okay, Pam also has her hand up.
That's probably because she had a voting problem.
Okay. Yep, she put it down.
I also have a vote for Adele Kraus.
Okay, how does Ms. Kraus vote?
She votes yes to terminate debate.
Very good. Okay, Ed Tremblay, Anne Aert, Richard Gallagher, Jennifer Seuss have not voted yet, if you guys could take a vote, there's about five of you left. We're going to give you 15 seconds on the motion to terminate debate. Five. And terminating debate, and we're terminating voting, so let's close voting. Terminating debate passes by a 96% margin, we have 231 in favor and 10 against, so debate is terminated. Run through the screens, then we're going to take the vote on the main motion as we administratively amended it. Seven. And Mr. Klein has a point of order. And voting is enabled, so town meeting members, please navigate to the voting portal, vote 1 for yes, 2 for no. And cast your vote. Mr. Klein, what's your point of order?
Christian Klein, Precinct 10, just before we take the final vote, if you could read the administrative correction one last time, thank you.
Okay, very good. Near the bottom of the recommended vote of the, on the Board of Select, the Select Boards page, under there, it says Article 1, Community. The second line will read, we value our active and compassionate community members delivering services to residents. Is that clear, sir?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So we have 67 people who have not voted yet, please go ahead and log into the voting page, hit refresh your page, 1 for yes, 2 for no, and then cast your vote.
Mr. Moderator, Julie Brazil, Town Clerk.
Yes, ma'am.
I have a vote for Adele Kraus, she votes yes for the article.
Very good, thank you. And while we're there, let's do Mr. Leonard and Ms. Karpelka. He votes yes. And Ms. Karpelka likewise votes yes. Okay, six people have not voted yet. Paul Schlickman, Carolyn Murphy, Mara Collins. And Ted Peluso has not been active for 31 minutes. So we're just going to wait on Paul and Mara, we're going to give Paul and Mara 15 seconds. Second, Mara voted, and Paul voted, okay, let's close voting. The Envision Arlington passes 99%, we have in the yes, 242 in the affirmative, 3 in the negative. It's a vote, and I so declare it, and that closes Article 7. Okay, that brings us to Article 8. Acceptance of Legislation Municipal Affordable Housing Trust Fund. Mr. Hurd, you wish to speak to be in article?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Moderator, John Hurd, Select Board Chair. This article was inserted by the Select Board to enact a new bylaw to create an Affordable Housing Trust Fund as developed and recommended by the Housing Plan Implementation Committee and Finance Committee. This article advances the town's goals of combating the housing affordability crisis in Arlington by creating much-needed affordable housing units. The Select Board voted in favor of positive action, 5-0, thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you very much. We have two amendments. Mr. John Gersh, Mr. Gersh hasn't raised his hand, I'm hoping Mr. Gersh is around to introduce his amendments, Mr. Gersh. There he is.
And thank you, Mr. Moderator, John Gersh, Precinct 18, Mr. Moderator, I move to amend the recommended vote of the Select Board, establishing a bylaw for an Affordable Housing Trust Fund under Article 8 as submitted, and further, Mr. Moderator, I move that my motion be divided into three separate amendments for three separate votes, please, thank you.
Very much.
Second.
Second. Okay, Mr. Gersh, you wish to speak your article?
Yes, thank you, yes, let me start by saying, I support the trust. Our Director of Planning Jenny Rate has laid out lofty, even aspirational goals for the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, I trust her, and therefore, I support the creation of this trust fund. There's just a couple of details we need to fix to strengthen the original article. Firstly, I'm recommending that the income eligibility threshold be 60% of area median income, or AMI, as opposed to 80% of AMI for rentals. At 80%, AMI ranges as high as $95,000 for a family of four, and that's not particularly affordable. If we're going to walk the talk of welcoming diversity and inclusion, creating opportunities for lower-income residents, then maxing out at 60% is better than 80% of AMI for rentals. And the new, and there's a new amendment up tonight for discussion that could raise this threshold up to 100% of AMI, which could open the trust up to funding apartments costing $3,000 a month, and that's the wrong direction. Please support the Gersh Amendment. And secondly, let's please retain some level of local control. I believe that those who approve the spending of town funds should be residents of Arlington, including representatives of local housing organizations. And finally, I'm asking you to restrict the use of the trust fund to uses other than supporting developers seeking a state law Chapter B comprehensive permit. 40B developers who gain this status are given a free pass to ignore almost all of our wetland conservation and other bylaws, such as height setbacks and open space. They may cannibalize our scarce industrial areas. And which are key to reducing the 94% town tax burden on residential properties. You feel this in your tax bill. And the units can revert to market rate in what is called expiring use. Furthermore, they will take 20% in profit right off the top, and sometimes considerably more. Our State Inspector General Gregory Sullivan has stated that 40B developers are routinely that forty B developers are routinely able to profit above and beyond what is allowed by law to the detriment of taxpayers, municipalities, and local efforts to produce affordable housing, those are his words. Forty B developers build primarily luxury market rate units, and we do not need to give them our trust fund dollars as profit, we should keep this money in Arlington for affordability that cannot expire via a forty B exception. We can achieve Planning Director Rate's stated vision for the creation of affordable housing handsomely by funding our housing corporation and housing authority, rehabilitating existing structures and so forth. The Planning Director's goal is to be able to respond quickly to opportunities that arise, often smaller properties. Forty B developments can be the exact opposite, slow, large, and complex, big enough to wipe out the trust fund. They have access to traditional funding methods, for example, at twenty Westminster, the Housing Corporation used a million dollars in CDBG and CPA funds, affordable, not controversial, and at sixty percent of AMI, I might add, the HCA standard. Forty B developments such as the Mugar parcel are often contentious and divisive, and while forty B has been on the books for fifty years, Massachusetts remains forty seventh out of fifty among the states in the production of affordable housing. We have an incredibly rare opportunity here for a pure affordability play. Don't tell me this can't be done. Forty B is not the Mugar parcel, they can contentious and ugly, there are plenty of ways to use these dollars to their maximum potential other than forty B. Please support the creation of the Arlington Affordable Housing Trust Fund, only as amended by the Gersh Amendment, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gersh, Mr. Foskett has a point of order.
Yes, Mr. Moderator, I think I may have jumped the gun on the, seconding the motion before. Does Mr. Gersh have, is he expect votes on three separate parts, or is it just one amendment?
He's asking us to divide the question into three separate amendments?
Has he, or I'm not clear.
Yes, that's what he is, he's requesting, three separate votes, one on each, one, two, and three.
That's what I seconded, thank you.
Yes, thank you. The next is an amendment by Karen Kelleher. It's Ms. Kelleher.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Karen Kelleher, Precinct five, and a member of the Housing Plan Implementation Committee. I would like to make a motion to amend the proposed new bylaw to amend the purpose section to modify the language that is referred to for the definition of affordable housing. You can see the text of the amendment on the screen, the motion is to replace the purpose section, the change is really just in changing the words affordable housing as defined in the zoning bylaw to the language you see on the screen, preservation and creation of community housing in the town of Arlington, as such term is defined in Section two of Master Law, Chapter forty four B, the Community Preservation Act.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Foskett.
Thank you very much. Mr. Gersh's amendment identified potential confusion that might result from the language of the original bylaw as proposed. It referred to an eighty percent of area median income limit, but when one referred to the zoning bylaw, there's some language there that is somewhat confusing that Mr. Gersh includes in his amendment, which includes the sixty percent for rental housing and eighty percent of area median income for homeownership. I'd like to propose an alternative way to clarify that, that maximizes the flexibility of the trust. My amendment would essentially refer to the Community Preservation Act, or the CPA, which is a flexible definition which already governs certain town investments in affordable housing made by the Community Preservation Act Committee, including the one Mr. Gersh referred to, and the Housing Corporation of Arlington property on Westminster Avenue. That definition is on, is not shown in the amendment, but thank you very much for putting up the Community Preservation Act language. Community housing is the term used in that law, and it is defined as low and moderate income housing for individuals and families, including low or moderate income senior housing. And Mr. Gersh is correct that this definition is a little more flexible than the definition he's proposing, and it would allow the trust, if it wanted to, to use funds to create housing that goes up as high as one hundred percent of area median income. Doesn't in any way require the trust to ever do that, but it gives it the flexibility to do it should it want to. That flexibility currently exists for CPA funds as well, but as Mr. Gersh pointed out, those funds have typically been used to subsidize lower income units. I have am personally likely to strongly prefer placing a high priority on serving lower income households in Arlington's affordable housing strategies. However, I strongly urge this body to maintain as much flexibility as possible in the bylaw that governs this trust. I say that as someone who has spent about twenty, more than twenty years developing and financing dozens of affordable housing projects, the vast majority of them include at least fifty percent affordable housing, and the vast majority of those units have been at or below sixty percent of area median income, and very often with a requirement that some be at thirty or fifty percent of area median income, so I have no difference with Mr. Gersh and his hope that our use of this trust will drive production of housing that's affordable to a wide range of people who really are not served here. And that might include some slightly higher income people, though it's not my, it's not my intent that we focus our efforts there, however. In all of those transactions that I've worked on, I'm well aware that developing affordable housing is incredibly complex and difficult. If this trust fund is successful, we will be using it to cause the creation and preservation of a wide range of units at a wide range of income levels with many subsidy sources. The vast majority of affordable housing transactions include six, seven, sometimes more than ten different sources. Those different sources typically are state and federal funds, sometimes even private funds that include different regulatory requirements, and the transactions are incredibly complex. Flexible funding that can be used to fund different things in the same transaction is very, very valuable to be able to bring to the table. I've seen this happen many, many different ways, I'm going to give you just one example that sort of points to why it might be useful to be able to subsidize housing at a slightly higher rate. I worked on a project, this is quite some time ago, in the town of Weston, it was a forty B project. It was actually a family that had excess land that wanted to develop affordable housing, and the town supported it. So in that respect, it was a friendly forty B, though it was opposed by some neighbors. That project included, because of the context, it had six affordable units that were developed without any town subsidy because it was a forty B, and because forty B essentially requires a market rate developer to pay for the cost of affordable housing, and that is what is actually the power of forty B, it produces affordable housing units which cost a lot to produce without subsidy, sometimes. It is also used by affordable housing developers for other purposes, I'm going to get to that in a minute. But in this particular project in Weston, there were excess development fees, excuse me, there were excess development proceeds, and it is in fact true that there is a twenty percent, there is a limit on developer fees in forty B projects. And I'm not going to get into the issue that Mr. Gersh has raised about that, but there is a limit, and it's a real limit, and it is typically not problematic, there has not been widespread abuse of that. Notwithstanding that, in this project, we had excess fee, funding, and we used it to create two moderate income units. And some additional funds were required to make that financially feasible, and those funds, they didn't happen to come, I don't think, from a trust fund, but they came in and subsidized units that were moderate income units, that were just a bonus on top of the affordable units that were already structured into that deal. That kind of flexibility is what I hope our trust fund can have. The definition that I'm proposing is the definition that is accepted and used right now by the Community Preservation Act Committee. If it can, if it's adequate for them, and they can be trusted to have that flexibility as they allocate our affordable housing funds, the trustees of this trust should also have that flexibility. With respect to Mr. Gersh's amendments, I've spoken to the first one, I don't have particularly strong feelings on his second amendment, which relates to residency of the trustees. As currently written, the only way that a non-resident could be a trustee of the trust would be if that person were to be a representative of a housing organization working in town. Personally, it doesn't trouble me if the Executive Director of the Housing Corporation of Arlington, who spends their days working to create affordable housing in Arlington, if they happen to live in Medford, it doesn't trouble me, but I don't have strong feelings about that amendment. I do have strong feelings about his third amendment, which seeks to prevent the trust from investing in properties permitted under Chapter forty B. I know that Arlington has had some very difficult experiences and continues to have difficult experiences with developers proposing forty B projects that don't align with what the, what the town's development desires are. That does happen with forty B, but forty B is also used proactively by municipalities and by affordable housing developers to streamline the permitting process. And the Westminster Ave project that Mr. Gersh referred to is actually an example of that. A project like that, which is creating affordable housing using forty B, should be eligible for trust support if needed for financial feasibility. Mr. Gersh's amendment would make that not possible. I've worked on a number of friendly forty Bs in many towns throughout the Commonwealth. In addition, though, trust funding could give the town leverage to negotiate for more low income units than forty B itself would require, or to target those units to be affordable to lower income households in a forty B project proposed by a for-profit developer. So for example, the Myrac property that's currently has a forty B proposal out. The town, if we had this trust existing, we had significant funds in it, we might be able to use those funds to leverage more affordability in a development that's proceeding. For those reasons, I oppose Mr. Gersh's third amendment very strongly, and I would urge you not to take tools out of the toolbox before the trust even gets formed. I think the issues Mr. Gersh is raising deserve a longer discussion, and the town should be having that discussion in the context of the process by which the trust, if it's created, would develop its action plan, and that would need to go to the Select Board, and there are going to be numerous opportunities for public participation in those conversations, and those issues are complex, and they deserve a very comprehensive conversation. We shouldn't be taking tools off the table before that happens. Most importantly, I hope you'll vote yes to approve the establishment of the Arlington Affordable Housing Trust Fund, and in doing so, join one hundred and fifteen cities and towns that have created a housing trust fund to proactively advance their own affordable housing agenda, support the diversity of their community, and control their own future, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Ms. Kelleher. Mr. Sanjay Newton. Oh, Mr. Yantar has a point of order. So hold on, Sanjay, we have to hear a team, Yantar's point of order is first.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Timor Kai Yantar, Precinct seven. I think it's highly important that we are all clear about what we're voting on, and including the amendments. And what I heard Mr. Foskett say was that Mr. Gersh's amendment is actually three amendments, and so we have amendments one, two, and three from Mr. Gersh, and a fourth one from Ms. Kelleher, is that correct?
That's correct, when we get to voting, I'll have four separate votes on the amendments, Mr., because Mr. Gersh's one is diametrically opposed, well, not diametrically, but it changes the same language, Ms. Kelleher, so you're either going to vote, and I'll explain this all when it gets to the point of voting.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, thank you. Sanjay.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator, Sanjay Newton, Precinct ten. I, I'm speaking this evening to, to urge people to, as Ms. Kelleher mentioned, leave the tools in the toolbox. You know, forty B does not have to be a dirty word, right, we can use that tool proactively, you know, without a for-profit developer, there are lots of other ways that forty B could be used. You know, removing that possibility is, is just foreclosing an opportunity for us to create affordable housing down the road. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir, Barbara Thornton.
Yes, thank you very much, I too am very much in favor of this.
Name of precinct?
Oh, Barbara Thornton, Precinct sixteen, sorry, Mr. Moderator.
Yep.
I too rise to speak in, very much in favor of this, this is a wonderful opportunity for the town of Arlington to develop a housing trust, to get money to, and this board, if the tools are left in the toolbox, can be very flexible about what they can do to help resolve the problems with affordability and housing and housing diversity in Arlington. So please vote yes, and please vote no on the Gersh amendments, thank you.
Thank you, Annie La Court.
Annie La Court, Precinct fifteen. I don't think I can make a better speech than Karen did in terms of the general need for this fund and for the reasons to turn down Mr. Gersh's amendments. I do have one quick question, I worked with Al Tasti on the Finance Committee on the language of this amendment, and one of the things that we did was we requested that members of the board or other representatives of both the HCA and the AHA be considered for membership on the board of the trust. And so that's why the phrase was added, that I think Mr. Gersh is concerned with, where some of those members, or someone in the position to serve as a representative of HCA, might not necessarily be a resident of Arlington. So my question is whether Mr. Gersh's intent is to prevent a future director of HCA who actually lives in Medford from serving on the trust, and, and, and to request of, protect town council through the moderator, whether or not the language as it stands would open us up to having members of the trust who are not residents of the town and not representatives of housing organizations like the Housing Trust and AHA that actually do all their work in Arlington.
Okay, so Mr. Gersh, does your amendment two prevent anybody but Arlington residents from serving in the trust?
That is the intention of my Article two, that we retain that level of local control.
Okay, thank you very much.
There was nothing in the, that I saw in that other, in the wording, preclude other people than chairs of the local local organizations from from getting a seat on the, on the trust board.
Okay, so then you had a question for Mr. Heim.
Yes, and whether or not the, the wording of the article as written, or the amendment, okay, opens us up to having members of the Board of Trustees other than representatives of organizations that obviously have a local stake, like HCA, residents of other towns on the board, is that implied by that wording? Are we, do, have we left a barn door open here? barn door open here?
Mr. Moderator, thank you, Mr. Moderator. Doug Heim, Town Council. So, the wording for folks who can bring up the vote says, "The voting members shall include a member of the select board designated by the select board and six members appointed by the select board." The voting members shall be residents or representatives of local housing organizations, may have relevant experience in this field of real estate, etc. So, the base criteria for the six members appointed by, the six voting members appointed by the select board are that they either have to be residents or that they have to be representatives of local housing organizations. I don't see a way for somebody who's not a representative of a local housing organization, who's a non-resident, to be on the board under this criteria. That answers Mr. Court's question.
I believe it does. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I want to strongly urge everyone. Sorry.
No, I just said, "Thank you, sir." I was thinking, Doug.
Thank you, sorry.
Yeah.
I want to strongly urge everyone to vote down all of Mr. Gersh's amendments. I don't think that it's necessary in terms of the makeup of the board, and I think his other amendments reduce the flexibility of the housing trust, and that flexibility is very important. I think what Karen was trying to say is that money is leverage, and for any affordable housing project that comes into Arlington, however it arrives, if we have money that we can put on the table, we have leverage to make that project be what the town of Arlington needs, according to the housing plan that the trust will put together. I do urge that you vote for the trust, hopefully unamended, except perhaps by Ms. Kelleher's amendment, which I think is correct. But vote for the trust nevertheless. We really need this tool. Thank you very much, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. La Court. Mr. Tully, who have a point of order?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. It appears to me that when the timer goes away by virtue of the article or a motion being presented on the screen, that the timer stops counting. Is it possible to keep the timer running while there are other things visible on the screen?
I think it does count in the background, but I've been using my wristwatch as well.
I timed a couple of the last speakers, and that would not seem consistent with my timing, so just an observation.
Okay, I'll keep an eye on that because it's supposed to run in the background, Joe.
Thank you.
Yeah, we'll figure that out. Thank you, sir. Mr. Bob Marlin, Robert Marlin.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move to terminate debate. Robert Marlin, Precinct 3.
Okeydoke. We have a motion to terminate debate in the article. And, Mr. Marlin, on all issues before us on the article, including the amendments?
Yes, including the amendments.
Very good. Thank you. We have a motion to terminate debate on the article and all issues before, including the amendments, so we're going to set that up.
Mr. Moderator, a second motion.
Thank you very much, Mr. Foskett. Okay, so town meeting members, go back to your voting portal. Hit refresh screen if you have to. And then click one for yes to terminate debate, two to no to keep the debate going, and then hit cast your vote. If you're having a voting issue, Ms. Weiman has brought up the ability to raise hand in Zoom or call Ms. Brazil, 781-316-3071. Bill Ford has a hand raised, Julie. Mr. Ford, you having a voting issue?
I'm mute myself. Sorry about that. I'm having trouble with my portal. I vote no.
Very good. We'll enter that vote for you.
Thank you.
Ford William. Mr. Weinstein has a point of order?
I'm sorry, that was a mistake.
Very good, sir.
Mr. Moderator, John Warden has a point of order?
Okeydoke. Mr. Warden?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, my computer kicked me out, so I am speaking on John's computer. I just want to raise a point of order. I have served for 12 years trying to get an affordable housing trust fund. I have certain points I desperately want to make about the trust fund and the
Uh, Ms. Warden?
Yes, I have not been
That's not, that's not a point of order. You're continuing debate, ma'am.
Well, I think debate should be
Well, it's not, terminate debate's not debatable. If the terminate loses, then you'll get to make your point. Thank you, ma'am.
He called in all the bad guys. He knew who they were.
Called in all the bad guys. John, come on. Okay, we have 19 people left to vote. If you'll please take a minute to go. Catherine Radville, Stephanie Ford, Weems, Brian Rierig, William Ford voted verbally, Larry Derenger, Samantha Dutra, Carolyn Murphy, Judson Pierce, Patricia Warden, a few folks, and Adele Kraus.
Mr. Moderator, Julie Brazil, Town Clerk.
Yes, ma'am.
Adele Kraus called me. She thought she had voted, but I agree she's not showing up on the screen. She does vote yes to terminate debate.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Okay, there are about five people left who have not voted. Pat Ward, Larry Derenger, Priya Sankala, Sankali, Lauren Boyle, and Samantha Dutra. If you folks want to take a minute and go ahead and vote. Is that a new point of order for John Ward, or is that the old one?
It's not new.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, let's close debate. Let's close voting. The motion passes 78%. It's a two-thirds vote, and I declare it. We have yes, we have 182 in the affirmative and 52 in the negative. So the debate is terminated. That brings us up to the voting. So we have essentially four amendments. We have Mr. Gersh's amendment, number one. Soon as this goes through, Adam will show us what Mr. Gersh's amendments are. We have Mr. Gersh's amendments, number one, where he's proposing the 60% area medium income for rentals, 80% for medium income. Then we have his number two, where he has a local residence requirement, and then his number three. And then we also have Ms. Kelleher's amendment, number which also is dealing with the same aspect of Section 2 as Mr. Gersh's amendment that is dealing with 60%. Her sets out a different defining scheme where she wants to use the Community Preservation Act as her baseline. So you would either have to vote for Mr. Kelleher, Mr. Gersh's number one, Section 2 amendment, or Ms. Kelleher's, because they both achieve different things. So first, we're going to vote on Mr. Gersh's three amendments, then we'll vote on Ms. Kelleher's. Mr. Ruderman has a point of order? Mr. Ruderman?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Michael Ruderman, Precinct 9. Have we in fact voted to divide the question?
We, because he hadn't introduced, hadn't been seconded yet, I took it to a request of his before it was introduced to consider it as three separate articles.
I see. Thank you for clarification.
Yeah, he had spoken with me prior to the meeting, and I told him that I already made that determination because it made sense to do it that way.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, so first, we're going to vote on Gersh number one. This is amending Section 2. So we've enabled voting. So please navigate back to the voting portal, refresh your page, and select one for yes, two for no, and cast your vote. So if you want Mr. Gersh's definition of Section 2, vote yes. If you don't want his, vote no. And the raise hand feature in Zoom is open if you have any questions about voting.
Mr. Moderator, Julie Brazil, Town Clerk.
Yes, Ms. Brazil.
I have a vote from Adele Kraus, voting yes on Gersh 1.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I changed. I'm sorry, that's incorrect. She abstains on Gersh 1.
Okay, so Ms. Kraus is going to abstain on Gersh 1. And after we enter that, we're going to take Elaine Crowder's point of order. Ms. Crowder?
Yes, Elaine Crowder, Precinct 19. Can you please, there are some of us who may not be familiar with the language, Section 2. Can you please restate the wording of this? So that we know what we're voting on?
Right, well, Mr., we can show it to you right there on your screen. What he's proposing is that instead of 80%, it'd be 60% area medium income for rentals and 80% area medium income for purchases. So he's proposing to add the 60% for rentals and define 80% as for purchases.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, we have 15 people who have not voted yet. If they would please take their moment and navigate over to their voting portal page, click one for yes, two for no, and then hit cast your vote. And I see Ms. Weber has her, Weber has her hand up.
I can't get back into the portal. I don't know what happened. I've been fine all night.
Okay, how would you like to vote on the Gersh 1 amendment?
Number one, no.
No, thank you. So we'll enter that for you.
Thanks.
Do you need help with the tech support?
Now I do, yes.
Okay, so it looks like Dennis is volunteering to give you a call. Does he have your phone number, Janice?
I think so. I hope my phone's charged here.
Okay, he's going to give you a call. Thank you very much. Yeah. Okay, so the four or five people, four people, Brooks Harrelson, Larry Derenger, Samantha Dutra, you haven't voted yet. Please do so now because we're going to close voting in 15 seconds. Five seconds left. And, okay, let's close voting on the motion to terminate debate. No, wait. Closing voting on Gersh 1. I'm sorry. So if the motion fails, it got 28%. So Gersh 1 got 66 in the affirmative and 166 negative. And motion fails at 28%. Okay, that closes that, and it's going to bring us to Gersh 2. Okay, now we're going to vote on Mr. Gersh's second proposed amendment, where he would like to make the voting members shall be residents, including representatives of local housing organizations, etc. So he would want to be the trustees should be residents, keep the control within Arlington as he states. So voting is now open on Gersh 2. Please navigate to the voting portal, click one, refresh your screen if you have to. Please click one for yes, two for no, and then cast your vote. And if you're having issues, please use Zoom raised hand feature. There's about 18 folks who have not voted yet. Please take your time right now. Go ahead and vote.
Mr. Moderator, Julie Brazil, Town Clerk.
Yes, Ms. Brazil.
Adele Kraus abstains on Gersh 2.
Very good. We'll enter her abstention. Okay, there are six people who have not voted yet. Patricia Costa, Janice Weber, oh, Janice voted. Patricia Costa, Samantha Dutra, Nada L. Patricia Costa, Samantha Dutra, Nada El Nui. Adele Kraus, oh, Adele voted already, Larry Deringer, and Niva Korba Hudek. So if those six people can go ahead and vote. At this point, because we're going to give you about 15 seconds. Five seconds left to go ahead and vote. There's three people left. And, okay, time's up. We're going to go ahead and close voting on Gersh two. That motion fails 24%. He received. A 56 in the affirmative. 179 in the negative. And it's a vote, and I so declare it. And that ends that article. Now we're going to vote on Mr. Gersh's third proposed amendment. His third proposed amendment seeks to provide that no funds of the trust fund shall be used in connection with any project developed under. National law chapter 40B. So he wants to add the very last sentence in that is underlying emboldened in front of you. So the voting time is now open. Please navigate to the voting portal. Choose one for yes, two for no, and cast your vote.
Julie Brazil.
Yes, ma'am. How does Ms. Kraus vote? What happened to Julie?
Apologies, I was on the phone. Julie Brazil, Town Clerk, Adele Kraus votes no on Gersh three.
Oh, it's no, thank you very much, ma'am. Okay, there were 20 people who have not voted yet. Please go ahead and do so now. Asia Kapka, Janice. Weber, Nada El Nui. Samantha Dutra, Joanne Preston. Makaya Healy, Scott Lever, Patricia Costa, Alum Sadat. And Mona Mandel have not voted yet. Please go ahead, you folks, and give it a shot. Okay, let me give you 15 seconds. Five seconds left to vote. And that's it. Let's close voting on Gersh three. Motion fails, receives 23% affirmative vote. It has 51 in the affirmative. 172 in the negative, and it's a vote, and I so declare it. When we run through the screens, then we will take up Ms. Kelleher's vote. And I'm going to vote on Ms. Kelleher's vote, who would like to amend. Changing the purpose to allow the definition of affordability to be governed by master general law 44B of the Community Preservation Act.
Mr. Moderator, just a point of clarification.
Yes, ma'am, sir.
I do have a Kelleher one and a Kelleher two. Is that correct?
No, she only has one, two was, I think, mislabeled. That was her memorandum telling us all the wonderful things about her article.
Okay, so could we consider Kelleher one then the primary vote?
Yes.
Thank you.
So here's what Ms. Kelleher's amendment would look like. If you're in favor of Ms. Kelleher's. Amendment, please, either way, navigate back to the voting portal. Refresh if you need to. Vote one for yes, two for no, and then click cast your vote. If you're having a voting issue, please navigate back to Zoom and use the raised hand feature.
Mr. Moderator, Julie Brazil, Town Clerk. Adele Kraus votes yes on the amendment.
Okay, we'll add to her vote for her. There are 34 people who have not yet voted. Please do so now, down to 25. And. We have 17 people who have not voted yet, Samantha Dutra, Zachary Grunko, Mona Mandel, Scott Lever, Lever, Adam Beidig, Patricia Costa, Joanne Preston. Carol Bann, Nada El Nui, Asia Kapka. And Robin Drack. Robin may be gone. Okay, so those eight or so folks, if you could now vote, I'm going to give you 15 seconds on Ms. Kraus's amendment. 10. And, okay, let's terminate voting. Ms. Kelleher's amendment passes by 76%. It has 170 affirmative. 53 in the negative. It's a vote, and I so declare it. As soon as we've run through the screens, we're going to take the main vote on the main. Motion of the Board of Select Board as printed in their report and as amended by Ms. Kelleher's amendment. Okay, so we're going to open voting on the main article as amended by Ms. Kelleher's amendment. I have a seven. What are we on? Eight, I'm sorry, you're right. Hours late.
You, Mr. Moderator, would you like me to add a word at the end? I can add a new agenda item that says as amended.
If you wish.
Or shall we just keep the?
Yeah, we can just do it because Ms. Brazil and I both know it's as amended.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, town meeting members, please navigate back to the voting screen, hit page refresh if you need to. Cast your vote one for. The article eight for the Affordable Housing Trust Fund as amended by Ms. Kelleher's amendment. If you're in favor of that, please vote one for yes. If you're not, two for no. And then hit cast your vote. If you're having trouble voting, please. Raise your hand in Zoom. Serena Memmon has her hand up.
Can you hear me now? I just voted.
Oh, you did. Very good, Ms. Memmon, thank you.
Thank you.
And Mr. Tosti also has his hand up.
It kicked me out again. Please record me as voting yes.
Very well, Ms. Tosti, will do. And while you're there, Mr. Kowalski. If you do, Mr. Tosti. Mr. Leonard. Recorded a vote of yes. And Ms. Krapelka. Likewise, recorded a vote of yes.
Mr. Moderator, Julie Brazil, Town Clerk.
Yes.
Adele Kraus votes yes.
Very good. Okay, we have. Six people who have not yet voted, Samantha Dutra. Catherine Radville. Janice. Weber. Weber, I'm sorry, Janice, Joanne Preston, Carol Bann, Nada El Nui, Asia Kapka. Robin Drack. Robin's gone. All right, if you guys can vote, we're going to give you about 15 more seconds.
Mr. Moderator.
Yes, sir.
Did you say that Janice Weber, Weaver did not vote?
Let me look. Yeah, I see Janice is not voting yet.
She says she has.
Ah. Can you ask her how she voted? Because we'll. Oh, wait a second, she just popped off, so she has now voted.
Okay, great.
Yeah. All right, thank you, Chris. Oh, that was Andrew, I'm sorry. Okay, let's close voting. The article passes by 94%. 221 in the affirmative. 13 in the negative. It's a vote, and I so declare it. That ends article eight. It's well past the witching hour of 11 o'clock, so if Mr. When the screen's done, if anyone has a motion for reconsideration, please. Raise your point of, do it by raising a point of order as soon as these screens are done. Now, when that's done, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn for the evening. So if you have a point of order, get ready to give that as soon as we close this article. Okay, Patty Muldoon has a point of order, so she may have a motion, notice of reconsideration. We bring up Patty. Yes, Ms. Muldoon.
Patricia Muldoon, precinct 20, move to adjourn.
Okay. Thank you very much. Seeing if anyone has a point of a motion for reconsideration. I'm asking them to use the point of order if they do. If we're going to give another second, if not, we're going to adjourn for the evening.
Second.
Second, thank you very much, Mr. Foskin. Okay, then, thank you very much. We did pretty well tonight. We got through. A couple of big issues, and we'll see you on Monday. If you have any questions, please email me and. Have a good evening. Thank you. Oh, Ms. Memmon has a point of order. Ms. Memmon?
Yes, Mr. Moderator, I thought we were supposed to possibly start the meeting earlier on the next meeting.
Well, that had been raised, but it won't work for a number of technical issues if, because we're taking people to get, start logging on at seven. And we're taking nearly an hour to get everybody logged on. To start earlier would really cut into all of our dinner times.
Okay.
Yeah, it's just not technically available, able to do so. Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
And that's what Mr. Yantar wants to do.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Timor Kaya Yantar, precinct seven. Is it correct that the amendment that was promised for article four has not been submitted?
Not yet. I have not seen it.
Wouldn't that make it overdue?
My.
I, Mr. Heim, Mr. Heim is working with her today, and technically 48 hours. I wanted it by today because he's working with her. If we get it pretty quick tomorrow, I'll circulate it, but I would definitely want to get it.
Mr. Moderator, this is Doug. May I speak for a second?
Yes, sir.
Thank you for recognizing me, sir. I realized that it's late. We did, we did submit one to the moderator. Obviously, he's been quite busy.
Oh, okay.
Running a meeting and getting. So one has been submitted to the moderator.
Oh, thank you. So I just haven't checked my email, Timor.
Okay.
I'll get that circulated out tomorrow morning.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Heim. Okay, folks. I'll see you all Monday.